I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All stand, all rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember McArdle.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comments? Anyone signed up for the public comments?
There's no one in the online audience? And no one has signed up for in-person for general public comment?
I see we have members of the public in the audience. Does anyone from the audience have anything to say? Any public comments? All right. Thank you. Okay, so next is the consent calendar. Councilmember McArdle.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent calendar items A and B.
Second.
So they moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the public hearing and adoption for the ordinance with proposed changes to MTMC 15.05.330, clarifying requirements for the undergrounding of power and other wireline services as it relates to existing single-family dwellings and providing for some exceptions, including undergrounding utilities.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Protem Wall, members of the council, and members of the public. My name is Jonathan Morales. I'm an associate planner representing the Community and Economic Development Department here at the City of Mountain Lake Terrace. Today, we are holding a public hearing as a follow-up to our introduction presentation for proposed code amendments to MTMC Section 1505, 330, and subsequent amendments to Chapter 1915, our definitions code. So in your meeting packets today, you should have received the council bill, the December 1 memorandum copy, and the two attachments and a copy of the ordinance. So as you recall, the proposed code amendments are intended to clarify references to undergrounding power and other wireline services as it relates to existing single-family dwellings in all zones where they are permitted. Our goal is to locate utility wires underground in all zones with specific exemptions for existing single-family residences in town center and all other zones. We believe that undergrounding of power line and other wireline services such as cable and franchise telecommunications lines helps to improve the aesthetics of our streets, addresses life safety, addresses public safety in relation to major storm events, so snowstorm, other sort of wind event, for example. It reduces the prevalence of power outages and improves fire and emergency access, especially for fire vehicles with ladders that may not be able to access alleyways due to the wirelines being in the way. So just a quick note about where we've been. So we've taken this process through Planning Commission. We held an introduction meeting, two discussion meetings, and a public hearing on November 14th where the Planning Commission recommended, forwarded a recommendation to the city council as far as the approval of these proposed code amendments. Other processes as required by state law. We've submitted our proposed code amendments to the Washington Department of Commerce. So they granted expedited review on December 1st. We issued the SEPA determination of non-significance on November... When did we do this? November 4th. So as of today, we've received no written public comments as of 4:00 p.m. today. We also did send our proposed COTEX changes to the CLEAR Group and MBACS, the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. And as required for any public hearing, we posted on-site and at city locations in addition to the Daily Herald. So as you know, the comprehensive plan is the city's policy document that helps set policies and standards and helps inform our development regulations and zoning code. So in 2008, there was an action step in the utilities element of the comprehensive plan on which charged city staff to develop a strategy by 2010 to encourage the undergrounding of overhead lines in the town center and other areas where they're most appropriate. So in 2010, the city council approved a underground power strategy, which is currently found in Appendix E of our comprehensive plan. And this sort of provides some goals for undergrounding with a lot of specifics on town center. The proposed code amendments are consistent with existing policies in our comp plan. So Policy LU 1.12, for example, locate the town center's utilities underground. This is found in the land use element. The utilities element has two policies which are consistent with what we're proposing. Much of this is focused... Policy UT 2.2 and 2.3 is focused on undergrounding in the right-of-way. What we're talking about today is specific to single-family dwellings and construction of residential properties, commercial properties, and industrial property. So as part of our efforts in preparing these code amendments, we did reach out to the Snohomish County PUD. We also did look at other jurisdictions to see what they're doing to solve this issue with overhead wirelines. So according to PUD, the standard service delivery currently is through overhead wirelines. PUD does not require the undergrounding of power. This is something that city councils throughout other jurisdictions set through ordinances. So it's passed through city council. The average cost for existing single-family dwellings to go underground is approximately $4,000 to $10,000. If a residence is just upgrading their electrical service panel, then they can do so free of charge, up to 200 amps. Most single-family dwellings are within that range, 200 amps or less. If they are above 200 amps and they're upgrading, then that is $3.98 per amp, additional charges. So on the screen here, this is our current distribution of underground distribution circuits. As you can see, right now, this is primarily located in the town center, so along 232nd Street Southwest, 236th Street Southwest, and portions of 56th Avenue West and 55th Avenue West. There are other areas in the city where there's underground conduits, conductors, and transmission lines that are undergrounded. And our city mapping software does have that capability to show where those are. So just a brief overview of what our current code states. So undergrounding of power is required when a new, replaced, relocated, upgraded, or extended electrical service is provided to any property in any zone. Staff has made the interpretation throughout the years to have this trigger be the movement of the electrical mass as far as that would trigger the requirement for undergrounding. So our purpose with these code amendments is to sort of clarify those requirements and make it more defined as far as who will be required to underground and when. Utility lines under 20,000 volts servicing a subdivision planned unit development, commercial or industrial development, are required to go underground. The installation of telecommunications facilities and other franchise wireline are required to go underground. And when there's overhead wirelines that are being undergrounded in the right-of-way, then this is also required. It's not required for the extension of distribution lines when the nearest point of connection is overhead and the poles are greater than 100 feet from the property line, and not required for utility lines over 20,000 volts. So currently, you can do a remodel on your house, and as long as you're not moving the electrical mass, you're not required to go underground. So we want to sort of provide a mechanism where someone can propose a remodel and also encourage the undergrounding of power. That wouldn't be too substantial of a cost. It'll add on an additional 10% to the total remodel cost. So these are just other sections where we reference undergrounding of power. We're not proposing to update these at this time. So now on to our proposed code amendments. So as presented previously, underground utilities in all town center zones would be required to... Underground utilities would be required in all town center zones except in the case of life safety hazards. So this is one exception where we wouldn't have this requirement. Underground utilities in all other zones are required for new single-family residential or other types of developed new construction, and also triggered when the valuation for a substantial improvement for existing single-family residential properties are greater than 50% or more of the assessed value of a single-family dwelling. And so the trigger here is a substantial improvement or a major remodel in addition to the movement or upgrading of the panel. So that would trigger the requirement to go underground. Again, we're maintaining the requirement for undergrounding for all new developments as is currently in our code and in town center. We're clarifying the requirement for undergrounding for existing single-family dwellings in all zones. We're providing for some exceptions in town center. So if a property needs to upgrade their panel due to life safety hazards, that is something that they can do without having to underground their power. We're proposing this threshold mechanism to assess the requirement. And also, just a note on the substantial improvement, this is a cumulative three-year period that we would assess the requirement. The proposed code amendments do address some equity concerns. For example, it allows for exceptions related to life safety hazards. The requirement for existing single-family dwellings is only if they are doing remodeling in excess of 50% of assessed value of the structure. So we believe that this would not be a punitive cost, as it will add an additional 10%. And again, if they are just touching the electrical panel alone, it won't be required. And then the 50% threshold is something that is found in our code currently. So we want it to be consistent with our code as far as the threshold percentage. So it's something that's set in precedent. So just a bit of a background on life safety. So as previously presented, many single-family dwellings in Mountain Lake Terrace do have these Zinsco panels. In 2002, there was a major recall, as these panels had been known to present an electrical So many existing family homes do have these panels. And so if a property was just proposing to upgrade their panel and swap it out, we wouldn't And so what's presented here is, this is an average housing sale price of $808,000 that we would find typically in Mountain Lake Terrace in February 2022. So this is an average concrete block structure where the average assessed value is around $500,000. So with this new code amendment, the assessed value of the sample property is 484,200. With the housing structure itself assessed at $137,900, we would utilize that 50% threshold to determine whether they meet the requirement to go underground. So if the total remodel cost, for example, is greater than 50% of that $137,900, then that would trigger the requirement to underground power. And if they're below that, then it's not required. So for example, in this case, the total assessed value would be $68,950,000? I mean, sorry, $68,950. And that would add an additional 10% to the total cost of the project. So subsequently, we are proposing to add new definitions to Chapter 1915 that correspond to these proposed code amendments found in Section 1505, 330. So we define assessed value of a single-family dwelling, which means the most recent value determined by the Snohomish County Assessor as it pertains to a single-family dwelling unit on a single lot without consideration of the land value. We are also defining life safety hazard, which means any incident where the safety of a person or equipment is at risk. So who would be able to qualify a life safety hazard event, as we're proposing, would be the building official and the Community and Economic Development Director. And then we're adopting in full the definition of substantial improvement as provided in the 2018 International Building Code. So today, we are here for a public hearing, and staff recommends that city council considers the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the ordinance as presented to update Section 1505, 330, and sections of 1915, and make a motion to adopt the code amendments and ordinance as presented. So I'm here for any questions.
First, does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore.
Hello. I know you're new to the city, so we always try and ask questions because we know of all the hard work that goes into your presentations. So I'm going to ask one. Sometimes we ask questions we might know the answer to, but we also like to redigest it a little bit. So I'm going to go back, and you could see my head was always popping up when the life-saving or the life-threatening portion of the presentation you were talking about, because I was trying to put it into contents. If we have somebody that has a house in our downtown and they have one of the panels... I'm sorry, it starts with a Z, the name of the panel?
Zinsco.
Zinsco, thank you. Would that be automatically considered a life safety change if they wanted to change out their panel or to remodel their home? I know it's under the discretion of the building advisor or the economic director. However, they wouldn't have to underground. So would that be kind of a grandfathering that might save them the $4,000 to $10,000 that it would take to underground it? Or is life-threatening... Do you have like a qualification of what the life safety threat would be per situation?
Yeah, so currently, a life safety hazard would be, for example, a Zinsco panel or other older electrical panel that does present some risk of electrical fire, for example, where the home is at risk. So that is something that the building official would determine if that would meet the requirement for a life safety hazard.
And the reason I'm asking too, I don't want to scare all our residents, but I know when I went home on Thursday night, I went out and checked my panel as soon as I got home, because that scared me enough to want to know what was on my panel. And so since they were recalled, are they all considered a life safety threat if you have a panel like that?
I believe they are, yes. I can confirm that with our building official.
I'm just... It's more of a curiosity question. You know, I mean, I didn't know, and it would be really interesting, because when I went home to look on my panel, I couldn't see who had put it in.
Right.
And so I was out there with a flashlight trying to see, and so it scared me enough to want to know, and something that we may want to put in the newsletter at one point. But it's something that you don't think of until a problem occurs, and so it's good to know.
And just for clarification, for anyone who's just changing out a panel or upgrading their service, they wouldn't be required to underground. The only trigger there is if they're also proposing that...
Really?
If they're also doing like a major remodel, and that's 50% of the assessed value of the structure.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay. I'm supposed to open the public hearing after all. Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad I didn't have a Zinsco panel. But I did have another panel that... A lot of people told me that most of the houses that had them had been burnt down. So I'm glad I replaced mine a few years back with a different company. The question is, on the assessed value to determine, that 50% to determine if you're going to do the panel and remodeling and all that, is that... Do other cities have 50%? Is that kind of a standard? Or are there other cities that have less or more?
So some cities do have less, but what we found is that 50% seems to be the standard. So we looked at what other jurisdictions are doing, and also, again, what we currently have in our code, for example, the new conformance, the non-conformances code does provide us 50% threshold. So we wanted to be consistent with that.
The reason I ask is I know that Councilmember Woodard was talking about remodeling, and at the time, maybe he wanted to do his panel, and I'm sure a lot of people maybe want to do the two things at once. And that... I mean, if you're remodeling a kitchen or a bathroom at $70,000, you decide to do the panel at $10,000. If it's around $10,000, it might be more. Now it's $80,000. Then you have 50% of $137,000, just on the house, not the property also.
Right.
That only is... What's that give you? About $58,000 to work with here. You're $30,000 over. I'm just wondering if anybody on the council thinks they'd like to change that otherwise? I just had a question on it. Not that I want it changed, but anybody think they need it changed if you want, you know, people in this predicament? They're remodeling, and I know people adding on to their houses a lot. We like... The reason I also bring it up is that in Mountain Lake Terrace, we do have a high population of houses built in 1952. They are the concrete block houses. They are not, I don't know, those other kind of houses they talk about. But they really aren't very good houses. And I don't know, you want to add on to it? Is adding on to it considered remodeling?
Yes.
So, you know, if I wanted to add on or remodel, I don't know. You had an extra, what do you say, average $4,000 to $10,000? I don't know. Just something to consider. I'd kind of like to have our city kind of get fixed up a little bit with the housing. And I'm sure after the storm, people are going to reconsider trees close to their houses.
Right.
Since a lot of those houses built in '52, people just let the trees grow or put them on the property line. And I know in my gutter, every year, I have at least 10 to 20 Douglas firs growing in my gutter. So I have to pull those out, because Douglas fir is a pretty big tree. So anyway, just wondering about if we want to maybe make an amend on that or just keep it the same for people who want to fix their houses up in Mountain Lake Terrace? Anyway, just a consideration. Thank you.
Does anyone have... Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's great to meet you in person.
Yeah.
I was looking at you going, "You look familiar." Oh, yeah, I was on the screen. That's why you look familiar. That said, thank you, Councilmember Ryan. I appreciate the call back. My question is similar, but mine's a little nuanced to say, I was curious when you did that survey of other municipalities and what they're doing. Did they also base it off of the structure versus the property value? I was trying to figure out that split.
I don't know the specifics. I would have to go back and look.
Okay.
But we did look at, for example, City of Shoreline, City of Edmonds.
Okay.
And I believe they do use the housing structure itself as their determination.
Okay. Yeah, so similar concerns, because again, I'm pretty sure it was going to be $70,000 no matter where your house is located or how old your house is. Might get higher than that. But in the spirit of fixing our homes, it does seem like a really low threshold. I just didn't know what we can do about that. So if we were interested in changing that, what is that process?
Amendment.
Just an amendment? Okay. Yeah, so I would be... I am interested in that, just in the spirit of recognizing that that's a really low threshold. I don't think I will personally be impacted by it, but I do recognize that a lot of my neighbors could be impacted by that. And so I appreciate the 50% that you did a survey, but I'm also wondering, well, those towns aren't as same age as us. So, you know, and just kind of looking at that, the structure's value itself is strikingly low. And if we base it off of that, that just seems a little bit, not short-sighted, but it seems like that might come back to get us in the spirit of like really curtailing people's ability to fix their homes. So I would... Go ahead, I guess.
Councilmember McArdle.
You know, I'm not opposed to having a discussion about it, but I would like to know, the 50% is set in precedent in other parts of our code. So, you know, I guess I would like to talk more about or know more about that precedent 50%, where it's found, what it means for that. If we change it here, do we have to change it everywhere else as well? Are they that closely tied to each other that it makes that big of a difference? And we end up kind of, lack of a better term, opening a can of worms that, you know, we... It's something we want to... We want our city to be, you know, safe and cleaner-looking with undergrounding utilities, but by doing, you know, a discussion like this, it just puts it off and adds everybody's workload. Not that that's, you know, not a bad thing, but just, you know, just so we know. It's the 50% was precedent in our code. So where is it and what effect would it have if we change it here to the other codes? Thank you.
Yeah, so it's in our zoning code, non-conformance code section. So under general provisions, non-conformances, there's a reference to 50% of assessed value threshold, and that's for damaged or abandoned buildings needing repairs. for damaged or abandoned buildings needing repairs. So, if they're with, above that 50%, 50% threshold, then they'll be required to comply with that code section. It's also in our town center design standards, related to remodels, building additions, and site improvements. So, if they're 50% or more, they would be required to comply with the town center design standards.
Go ahead, Councilmember McCardo.
Thank you for that, you know, with the non, with the zoning and the non-conforming and stuff, that's the issue, from my understanding, why the old Red Onion Building is sitting there, closed up, because of the rehab, it had a fire, and the 50% mark on the rehabilitation of the building, the owner just says, "It's not worth it, I'm going to wait," and it just sits there, and there's really nothing we can do about it, so, you know, the 50%, you know, I don't know if we lowered it, is that what you're thinking, or what? So, maybe, I don't know.
Increase the threshold.
What's that?
You want to increase the threshold to lower the cost.
Right, but the percentage wise, then, you'd have to go, right, raise it, but just something to think about.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Or, we just put the 50% on the entire property and housing value.
You mean the assessed value with the land and the improvements?
So, just the assessed value, including the market land, and?
I couldn't hear that.
So, just the assessed value, so, and for example, in this case, the 484,000, 50% of that?
Councilmember Murray, and then, Hassan Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we go back and revisit the why that this is before us? Because I do think, I mean, our goal is to get to a place of more undergrounded utilities, and I thought we went over that fairly thoroughly when we, when we had this conversation on Thursday, so maybe we could revisit that piece, so that we can ground in why that this is before us, and then the potential impacts of lessening the timeline for some of those changes happening in our community.
Yeah, so, besides the aesthetic quality of this, the most, the major reason why is the life safety impacts that many of our existing single-family dwellings pose. So, for example, the Zinsco panel is an example of that. And then, just a general public safety matter, overhead wire lines do have the potential to tip over, wire lines could be during major storm events, could be found on the ground and present a risk to humans. Yeah, so, we, our, that's one main reason why we're proposing these code amendments, to address those life safety and public safety issues.
Thank you, no, I appreciate you revisiting that for us, and I think it's particularly timely, given our experiences the last couple of weeks, and the number of downed wires, and the impact that it had on our community, and so, I appreciate, I think, the desire from staff's perspective to look for opportunities for consistency, and opportunities to help move us forward, and at least from my perspective, I think 50%, I live in one of those houses, Councilmember Ryan, and I think that they are lovely, just so we're clear, but I do think that 50% of the assessed value of the actual dwelling seems like a fair threshold, given that's our threshold for other things, and think that there is a lot of value in looking for opportunities to standardize our code as we make adjustments over time to try to lessen complexity for those trying to navigate improvements to their home in our community. So, thank you for bringing it forward, and I think it's a good conversation, and I would support moving forward as it stands.
Councilmember Hassan Moore.
This one is a little bit off base, but it's something that I'd like to bring up on an agenda item in the future, is the Red Onion Building and the House on 236. The city is able to condemn houses and put liens on them, we've been talking about that for years, and we've never quite got there yet, and so, I understand where Councilman McCardo is coming from on that, but that is something that we can control, and other cities do do this, and it is unbelievable that we've had the Red Onion in our downtown sitting there with trees growing out of it for years, and the House on 236, this is my big pet peeve, for 17 years, that was a meth house that is still not condemned and not has, have, has not been removed. And so, our downtown, we're always talking about aesthetics, and that's one thing that needs to be brought back to the council, and so, I'd like that as an agenda item in the future, so we don't put that off again. And with the direction here, are we offering any direction to go change what we're seeing tonight? I'm trying to understand what's, what venue we're taking with some of the comments. Is there like, something you want to bring back to the council that we're seeing, that we're not seeing tonight? I just want to make sure your questions have been answered thoroughly on what you're asking, with, it sounded like at one point you wanted to raise the 50%, but then Councilman McCardo talked about our 50% threshold, so I'm just trying to understand where the conversation is being directed.
We would need votes to change the threshold, but, does anyone else have anything to say before I go ahead?
With the conversation, I would, I think we have maybe three council members that possibly would go, and I'm guessing, and we haven't done the amendment yet, possibly go for the, where's the other slide with the average home on Mont Lake Terrace? Could you bring that back? There it is. So, if your property with the house is 484,000, to do the 50% on that, so the combined property and house versus just the house. And, that's, that's what I think some council members are speaking of, and they might not, so, if there's any, they could have some more discussion, and then we could do some amendments if that's proper.
Mayor Protem Wal.
Just to be clear, so, 50% of that would be 242,000?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to clarify process, first of all, we need to open the public hearing, have the hearing, get, see if there's any public feedback, close the public hearing, and then have discussion, put a motion on the table, have discussion, decide if we want to make amendments, or potentially table it and give direction to staff to bring it back. So, that's, just keep that in mind, so, yes, there's, as far as potentially addressing the amendment, or making changes, then that, that's how we want to go about doing it. I did have a question about, you know, we did the survey to get an idea of what other jurisdictions have done, have we done any, or has anybody done any work as far as, how does, by undergrounding utilities, how does that increase, I'm assuming, increase the value of the property?
That, we haven't done that, but that's something that we can look into. I think from an aesthetic quality, it probably would raise the property value, but, yeah, I'm not sure.
It would be interesting to get that, and the other thing I want to point out, I'm probably, at this point, leaning towards keeping the 50%, although I, I'm intrigued by the idea of doing, you know, whether it's the structure itself or the overall, but I do want to point out, we should not be trivializing 10% as a minor amount, I mean, it's a minor amount when we're talking about a dollar or two, and 10% tax, it's not a minor amount when you're talking about, you know, a $50,000 improvement, right? And that's, and so, it is, it is a substantial chunk of additional change, but at the same time, the aesthetics, I, you know, it's ironic, I guess, about the timing of bringing this forward now, as Councilmember Murray points out, I mean, look, we've just gone through a very traumatic week with weather-wise, that has affected our residents, and the, if, had these, everything been underground, we wouldn't have seen the same impact, and it is definitely, you know, I lived in a neighborhood that did this, undergrounded, when I was growing up as a kid, that undergrounded the utilities and the wires and all of that back in, you know, 40 years ago, when it was cheaper, but they did it as a, as a community, not as individual properties being developed, and the challenge, of course, by doing it by, with redevelopment, is the same thing, kind of a patchwork system, just like our sidewalks, you know, we're looking to improve our sidewalks and get sidewalks throughout the entire community, and, but by doing it through redevelopment, you're, you know, you've got splotches here and there, and we're going to see the same thing with undergrounding, and I'd be interested in what we think that impact would be, as, you know, what is it, okay, so you have one property here that redevelops, and, and so, you have poles here, then it goes down underground, and then, so, it's, it's, at the same time, obviously, the reason we're doing it that way is because there's a, it would be a substantial cost to the city if the city were to take that on ourselves, but it is, I think it is, you know, it's something absolutely, I appreciate the goal, and what we're trying to achieve, and why this is before us, and again, the timing is, is certainly worked out in favor of taking, taking a look at it, but at the same time, I do agree with the concerns about costs, and 10% is of, you know, several, of a lot of thousands of dollars is, is a hard hit, so, at any rate, those are my comments on this at this point, I guess, maybe we should open the public hearing, if there are, unless there's other questions or comments.
Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, if with our existing code, right now, if I wanted to change out my electrical panel, and that's it, I would have to underground my utilities, is that the way it currently reads?
So, as it currently reads, yes. But, as stated, staff hasn't made the interpretation that the requirement would only be triggered with the movement of the electrical mast, so that's how it's currently implemented. So, the goal of these proposed code amendments is to sort of provide more definition as far as when we would require it, and how, because currently, it's not very clear.
So, right now, according to our code, the way it's written?
Yep.
The city could, if I wanted to change out my panel, require me to underground my utilities, but, we're, we've, as a city staff, has decided to say, no, that includes moving the electrical mast, that's what triggers it right now.
Yes.
This would clarify and say, this is exactly when you have to underground. Okay, thank you.
And just to go back to the 50%, again, if someone's just doing a remodel of their home and not touching the electrical panel, this doesn't apply. If they're doing a remodel and have to update the panel, or move it somewhere because it's in the way, and they're within that 50% threshold, then that's when it would apply.
Good clarification, thank you.
And so, when a person is thinking about remodeling, and they need to come to the city anyways, I hope at that time, the city will tell them, ask questions, ask how much it's going to cost, and warn them that if these things are going to happen, they would need to underground their utilities.
Yeah, yeah, we would definitely make sure that during our permitting processes, we're ahead of this, and explaining to the applicant that these conditions would apply if they meet that.
So, it's, it's a clarification thing, and it's a, and a warning when they come in, ahead of time?
Yep.
So, shall we open the public hearing? Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I understand, from the slide, that if you're going to just remove your panel, get a new panel in, you don't move the electrical mast, there's no threshold tripped. What if you remodel and leave the mast, and remove the panel? Is there a trip?
Um, yes, because with this, with the new code amendments, we're not going to have this electrical mast trigger.
A little louder for me, please.
With these new proposed code amendments, we wouldn't have this electrical mast trigger, so, if you're doing the remodel, and also changing out the panel, then that's when it'll be required.
Regardless of electrical mast or not?
Correct, yep.
Okay. I also want to add that, piggybacking what council member, who was it? Anyway, talking about peace, Mayor Protem, sorry, piecemealing house by house by house, that it's not just the wires or the trees falling on the wires, and by the way, I want to go back to trees in your property or not, it's called tree management, and a lot of people are not utilizing tree management for the lines, or their property, so that's a problem there, so that's a different issue. But, the thing that really goes out, and I saw it go out on my street, on 58th, right up here, was the transformers. So, if you do underground wiring, where do the transformers go, if you piecemeal?
Yeah, so, I believe the underground, the transformers are undergrounded as well, but they can also be located on the property itself, I can confirm that with our contact at Snohames County PUD.
Okay, because I, I know a transformer's like, every two, three blocks, there's a transformer, and when I looked out my window, and then the lights went out, and then, I saw this big flash, and then, the lights went back on, and then they went off, and it went, and it looked like lightning, but a ball of lightning. I thought it was extraterrestrial or something, but it was really wild, and then, of course, my power was out till the next day. But anyway, yeah, transformers are, I'm just wondering about where those go, because they're usually for, like, two blocks, a transformer, instead of per house, so, I'm just, if you piecemeal in it together, you're still going to have the transformer, but, I don't know, I guess you, oh, well.
Does anyone else have anything before we open public? All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking forward to seeing how the city clerk puts in the minutes, spells out the (noise), at any rate, I'm, I move to open the public hearing.
So, it's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now open. City clerk, do we have any written testimonials or comments?
No one has signed up in person to testify, and if anyone in the online audience would like to make a comment, please use your hand raised tool. Going once, going twice, that's it, no one's chimed in.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed. Let's see, are there any, are there any other?
Motion on the table first.
I'm reading this, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, move to approve the changes and additions to the municipal code as described in the, in and conditions in the ordinance.
So, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? No, hold it, discussion. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment. I would like to make in a proposed motion for amendment to amend the code to be, instead of 50% of the house, to be the, 50% of the property and the house.
Can I second, I don't know, do we second? Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? Do we have a discussion on that before we vote? Okay. Does anyone? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to, I don't remember who said it last Thursday, but also just kind of recognizing this movement towards electrical vehicles. I have already said that I was looking at remodeling our bathroom, and that was a 70, and we were looking at electric cars at the time, which would require a little bit more. And I will just say, that would have shocked me. Nobody got that, huh? To have learned that I would also have had to underground, and I suspect I would have been the $10,000, because we haven't talked about, why is there such a wide range, which I presume is because unless the current pole is on your side of the street and directly across from your house, you're paying to get it over there as well, which I was trying to figure out. Does that mean I got to pay to have it go under the street, down the block, and up the pole? Like, I was trying to figure out, why was that so high? But I was thinking, I guess I'm just out of luck, because I don't have that many power poles on my block to begin with. And then on top of that, the ones that are near me are not close by, and I suspect I'm paying to, I imagine, interrupt my neighbors' time and space to do all of that. So I'm just trying to piece all that together, and it just seems really low that, at the end of the day, I'm paying for the entire property in my taxes. I mean, literally, that's the first line that says, you're paying at the 484 level taxes, but you're only going to, at our threshold, keep it at my structure, which could be a significant lowered number, which, again, that's why I'm encouraging us to think about, look at our city. It's like, it's like our pipes are all at the end of their lifeline. Well, these houses, I am in one of those 1952 homes. I love it, don't get me wrong, but that's still a lot to ask, I think. And again, we're trying to be modernized here. We didn't do any of this in the end of the day, because we just couldn't afford it, which is my point.
Yeah. To answer your question about the 10,000, so that is, so the number gets higher if the utility pole is, for example, across the street from your property. It's lower if it's closer in. Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question on getting back to the consistency issue as far as the 50% in the other areas of the code, talking about triggering additional requirements. Are those based on the structure or the total value of the property?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, where I'm going with this is, I believe it's on the total value of the property, which means this amendment would be consistent with, would make, actually make it more consistent with the other requirements in place. So I think that might be worth exploring. And I guess where I'm also going with this is, perhaps, it sounds like there's a lot of questions out there, a lot of additional information we'd like to get, and so perhaps it's more, unless there is a pressing need to do this tonight, which I don't see, perhaps it's better to table this motion and give you a chance to come back with more information on some of the questions that we've asked, and give us a chance to really think, think this one through, make sure we do it right when we do it.
If I, if I remember correctly, the town center threshold was 50% of the improvement. But now, we're saying that maintenance is not going to be a part of that.
No.
If it's a new roof, it's not a part of that amount.
The, in town center, as we're proposing, you would be required to underground, except in the case of life safety hazards. In all other zones, that's where the 50% threshold would come into place, so outside of town center.
So, so town center was one thing, but we're talking about the whole city?
Right.
Here. Mayor Protam.
If you look at the attachment one, which is our proposed code changes, it provides So, D2, for example, where there are modifications to existing overhead electrical service on a property in town center zones, single-family dwellings shall be required to provide for undergrounding of power and other wireline services, and we're making an exception. Modifications required due to life safety hazards in town center zones shall be exempt from requiring undergrounding of power and other wireline services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to throw out some, you know, if we are going to send this back and bring it back before council at a later date, some other things to potentially examine are, you know, not only whether it should be, whether the threshold should be 50% of the structure or the total value of the property. Another, another consideration that we might put on the table is to do this a little more incrementally and do just new development, or just the town center, and just kind of see how it goes, and then discuss at a further time, expanding it beyond town center, or, in other words, there are other things to consider in how we approach this, rather than just saying yes or no to what's before us.
Yes, I see Kristi Osborne in the room, but I thought that the 50% applied to the structure, so I would ask that Kristi provide clarification if she can.
Kristi, are you there? Yeah, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Just what I was alluding to prior is collecting all the comments that we had tonight, including different scenarios of what it would cost, like if we're talking about the remodel, so we can actually get it out on paper and see it. I believe this has come to us before, and somebody had an issue because they were upgrading their panel, and I'm trying to remember what that scenario was, and that's what we could have asked Kristi as well. But it sounds like we just need some more information to digest it, and I like the idea of maybe bringing it, tabling it and bringing it back, because I don't, I don't hear a whole consensus from everybody. It seems like there's more questions to ask, and that's why I was trying to see if we could gather some of those questions up. It sounds like this is the scenario of different costs. It sounds like in different neighborhoods. And the scenario to make sure that we knew if it was a panel and they were remodeling exactly, would it be 4,000, would it be 10,000? And then what it would look like if we did over 50%, and what benefits would that really give to us, and what wouldn't it? What are we not quite digesting the benefits from everything? I guess it's not as crystal clear to us as it should be, and I'm trying to come back with what exactly we're looking for that would help us make that decision. And one of those decisions is looking at the different scenarios of cost to our citizens who are remodeling, because it is expensive to remodel something. And so, the way I'm understanding it, it would be an automatically between $4,000 to $10,000 extra, in addition to their remodeling cost if it's over 50%, and maybe just different scenarios on that. I'm just trying to provide direction of exactly what we're trying to ask, so we can make a better decision.
Again, the 50% is, if they're just doing the remodel, then they're not required to go underground. What the trigger is, is if they are also swapping out the electrical panel, changing that. And so we feel like the benefits of this is to address those life safety issues. And we currently don't have a good mechanism in our code right now to address this issue. Right now, it's just moving the electrical mast. So if we want to get to a place where many of our neighborhoods are undergrounded, then currently by code, it's very hard to do that.
Well, I see that Kristi is trying to get on. We have another. Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Yeah, I just want to validate what you were saying, that it's very real. I went to one Kraken game last season, and I had to spend the first period listening to, as it would turn out, the gentleman who went with me, I didn't know at the time, was an electrician, and he was very clear that he would never work in Mount Lake Terrace again because of our codes. I, and I'm telling you, it was a great Kraken game, except for that experience, because I had no, nothing, no grounds to stand on. I just kind of went, I don't understand, but kind of watched the game. So, just kind of recognizing that it is impacting other professions. I do recognize it's complicated, and I appreciate that we're trying to put clarity, but I also don't want to add that clarity, and then everything comes to a halt, if you will. Because as I'm thinking through what I actually wanted to do, I think I had no choice, because also part of our remodel was looking at our garage and repurposing that, which is where the panel currently is. So I know we were thinking about that, so it's one of those where I'm like, I get it, it's complicated, but at the same time, I want to make sure, whereas we're adding clarity, we're not pricing people out of being able to do what they want to do, because our garage is an absolute freezer in the winter, and an absolute oven, not in the cool way, in the summer, and it's not even having to be a hot day, you know? So in that regard, just even thinking about those types of adjustments that people want to make. And then there's that three-year limit. I remember asking on Thursday that.
Yeah, so that's a important point.
Right? So it's like, I want to make sure that we don't fix something, but then also cut out entire industries of movement, because people literally can't afford to do it. But I do appreciate the predicament you're in, and I appreciate Councilmember Sonmore trying to give us some direction. Thank you for that. I appreciate and agree that, and maybe we came back with scenarios, that would be helpful.
Did we still want Kristi to answer the question? Kristi, it looks like you're, you're not muted, and, but we, can you, can you hear us?
So, if the question is, if the 50% is applied to the structure, yes, it is. It's the market improvement number that's found in the county assessor's website, so that is the assessed value of the structure alone. So that's where that 50% would be applied to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe if I have my Robert's Rules, tabling takes precedent over a motion that's on the table, and so I would move to table this motion for further discussion at a future meeting. I know it's supposed to have a little more specificity to that, as far as a specific date, but I don't want to put any pressure on dates. I want to leave that up to planning staff, based on how much time you need to be able to bring back the information we've been discussing and are looking forward to be able to come back with a clear decision.
If I understand, yeah. If I understand correctly, we would bring back some costing assumptions, looking at different housing types, so not just concrete block structures, but other materials, and then also provide an overview of what we've seen in other jurisdictions.
Can council hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, sorry. I, for some reason, my computer is not working, and I apologize. I'm not sure where we went to, but though, currently in the city, and I'll just reiterate, right now, if you're doing anything where you're moving your mast on your electrical panel in an existing single-family home, the city requires you to underground power. This provision is to allow folks who have existing single-family homes and are doing minor modifications, such as updating their electrical panel, or doing work which complies to the threshold of 50% of the structure's value, to be able to do those minor improvements and not have to underground utilities for existing single families. So if you're doing a new single family, you're doing a subdivision, you're doing any planned unit development, just like what's in place right now, you would have to underground utilities. This is actually a benefit to existing single-family homeowners to relieve the cost burden in cases where you're doing some minor remodeling, or you're moving your electrical mast, where you're not having to pay for undergrounding. In the case of town center, where we are requiring people to go underground, basically, period, we're, we're putting a provision in to say, hey, we realize we have a lot of unsafe electrical panels out there in the community. If you're doing something to make it safer and replace your electrical panel, we're not going to require you to underground that service. So, this is something that's meant to benefit people, not, not the opposite of that. So, we're actually saving folks, we're, we're saving folks money, and we're trying to make the community safer at the same time. What we, what we don't want to see, and which is what's been, what happened, is that we have a lot of slips and a lot of major reconstruction and redevelopment going on, if you will, of existing single family. And so, typically, if we have something that's non-conforming in our code, we have a threshold of a 50% threshold. And so this is just keeping in with what we, what we determined for a threshold for anything else in our code, for grandfathering and that. So trying to keep it the same across the code, where it's very easy to understand, 50% of the value of Snohomish County Assessor's Office for your structure, as long as you're not moving past that threshold, you can do the work for existing single-family home without having to underground your power. I hope that helps.
It does. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Kristi, for the explanation. I think that is very helpful and insightful. I guess, just to add on to some of the direction I'd like to get, is, is look at different scenarios. I mean, what are the benefits and detriments, I guess, to what's in front of us? What are the pros and cons, if you will, of the motion that has been put in front of us? What are the pros and cons of the amendment to the motion? What are the pros and cons of doing it differently, or looking at it differently? In other words, just town center versus the entire city? What about doing just, you know, basically, complete redevelopment or new development, you know, putting it, burning it to the ground and starting over again, as opposed to 50% threshold at all? So I'd just be interested in coming back with several different scenarios for us to consider, and the pros and cons to each one, so that we're able to make a really clear, fair decision at the end of the day. And then again, I mean, think of it, potentially, I mean, do we want to do this incrementally to be able to see how it works, and then consider expanding if it works well, or if there's concerns, especially with cost? And so I guess that's the direction, the additional direction I'd like to get as far as when we were to bring this back.
Okay. And I'm not sure what the motion was, and I apologize, or the amendment. I would just like to say, we did look at surrounding jurisdictions. So, Mount Lake Terrace currently is the most restrictive jurisdiction as it come, as it applies to existing single-family residential. So this is only existing single-family residential, nothing else. So, if you currently are redeveloping, you have to underground. That's not going to change. This is only, I am a property owner in Mount Lake Terrace, I have an existing single-family dwelling, it's going to stay existing single-family dwelling, but I want to update the electrical service, or I want service, or I want to update the electrical service, and I'm doing a bathroom remodel, or I'm doing something else to my home. Can I do some minor modifications without undergrounding? This is what this provision is for. So I would say, understand your concern, just wanted to assure you that we have looked at all of the local jurisdictions around us. Like I said, we're the most restrictive. We've sent this to master builders, we've sent this to the CLIR group, we have talked to a lot of electrical installers, some of them which have told me that they refuse to work in the city of Mount Lake Terrace anymore, because we're too restrictive on this. And so we still require undergrounding. This is just something where we're trying to get things more safe in the case of existing single-family residential only. So hopefully, that helps. I mean, we can come and tell you what the provisions are for surrounding neighbors, but I wanted to assure you that we did do that research and that background before we proposed anything, in addition to reaching out to the PUD on all of their requirements as well, and working hand in hand with them. So just want to assure you that we've tried to do our due diligence throughout this process.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Christie. The current code, if someone wants to remove their panel, put a new panel in, what's that?
We would require it to be underground, under the provisions of this, if you wanted to move your mask and electrical panel. And in some cases, we have panels that are located in bathrooms of homes, or they're located in locations where they would not meet current code standards. So we want to make those code compliant, make electrical panels and service to existing single-family homes safe, at the same time, not making it cost prohibitive for an existing single-family property owner to do that. And that's basically what we've been hearing the last number of years, is that if you include the cost, which could be anywhere from about $4,000 to $10,000 more to underground, then that's the difference a lot of times of people updating their electrical service or not updating it. So we're proposing to err on the side of health safety, to say, yes, we want you to upgrade your electrical service if it is unsafe, and not do an undue burden if it's an existing single-family homeowner.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
So if I could clarify that, if I have electrical panel, I am not moving the mask. I'm just putting a new panel in. Currently, the standard, most everybody sells is a double D. Do I have to underground, under current code?
If you're not moving the mask, you would not have to, you would not have to underground.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore. Current code.
Did you hear me okay?
Yes.
Anyone else? Councilmember McCardo? Just to clarify on that issue, that including moving the electrical mask, is that actually written in the code? Or is that something you, as a department, just decided to make that to trigger?
I would say the language is not great. It's been the way it's been implemented for quite some time, of moving the mask, and we want to clean up the code language, so it's clear as to when it requires undergrounding for electrical service, and when it doesn't require undergrounding for electrical service. So that's been one of the problems, is that the code is not clear. So this code language would help clarify that. At the same time, put some new definitions in place as well, that we think would be helpful in making it crystal clear what the intent of the code is.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Wall, I mean, Mayor Protam-Wall.
Yeah, I would just bring us back to the motion to table. We can vote it down if we don't want to send it back, and we want to vote on it tonight, the original motion, if we want to vote on it tonight. But we do have, I guess, a motion that needs to be seconded. If it's not seconded, then it dies there, here and there, here and now.
And the motion was to?
The motion was to table indefinitely, I guess, and let staff bring it back when they have the information feel comfortable bringing it back to council. For further discussion and consideration.
I don't. Councilmember Woodard?
I realize I just wanted to, thank you, Christie. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say that in your due diligence, that you did survey the surrounding communities, and they all are using the 50% of the dwelling?
In most cases, for existing single-family residential, there's not a outright requirement in a lot of cases to underground electrical service. It varies. So for us, as a threshold of trying to take a look at policy language in our code, the want or the desire for undergrounding electrical service, you know, to work to achieve that, and at the same time, trying to take a look at how we handle other non-conforming issues. That's where we landed on the 50%. I would say, yes, that's used in other jurisdictions that are near to us as well. And that's something that, that 50% is something that we use throughout our code for other things, when we're trying to determine whether new code applies to them, or whether a certain provision is grandfathered in our code. And so we just wanted to be consistent with that. That's the 50%. There's not really any magic in it, other than that's kind of a tried and true percentage that you'll find throughout many planning departments in the United States, is there tends to be a 50% threshold applied to when you have to meet new code provisions, or when you are grandfathered into other provisions in a code. So just trying to remain consistent with that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
There's no second, then the motion dies.
There is no, I have not heard a second, so. To table it.
I've motioned it twice. Moved to table. That's the part I didn't do, is, so I'll move to postpone indefinitely. How's that? Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded. Do we vote on this one? So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So do we do a roll call vote? Okay. Motion carried five to two. I was doing my math in my head and didn't. So it is now postponed.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, and so we'll see you again.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next on the agenda is public hearing and adoption for the 2023, 2020, we're done with the other one, right? Okay. The 2023, 2024 Bionial Budget Ordinance.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. For the record, Stephen Clifton, Assistant City Manager. So tonight, we are here because we're holding a December 5, 2022, public hearing. And tonight is the seventh public meeting on the proposed budget. The first took place on November 2nd, followed by November 9th, 10th, 17th, 21st, and December 1st. And last week is when we presented a discussion of the council-requested additions, and also a discussion and review of the 2023, 2024 Bionial Budget Ordinance. And tonight, we're holding a public hearing on and adoption of the 2023 and 2024 Proposed Budget and Ordinance. So for tonight's presentation, what we did is, the slides used on December 1st by Janela Lewis, our Finance Director, and also the slides that I used that same evening, we've combined those into one presentation for the public hearing. We thought that would be the most effective way of sharing the information with the public tonight. And so the slide before you this evening relates to the eight city council goals that were approved by the city council on June 6th of this year. It's important to note for the public that when city administration and staff undertake the preparation of a bionial budget, it's important, if not imperative, that we use as our guide the vision and the goals that have been approved by the city council. So what you see before you this evening are those goals, and the first is an informed and engaged community. And later on, I'll actually go through a list of how the proposed budget actually meets these goals. A vibrant town center and economic vitality that provides jobs, services, and activities; sustainability and environmental stewardship; events that celebrate the arts, neighborhoods, and culture; housing choices for all income levels; active and passive parks that provide a variety of recreation opportunities for all ages and abilities; feeling safe and welcome throughout the community; multimodal connections to all neighborhoods, and responsible government. Janela used this slide last week, and it represents an organization of the budget. And so what you have here are general funds. You have the overall general fund, which is listed first, followed by special revenue. And there are eight: street operations, strategic reserve, hotel-motel tax, solid waste service, American Recovery Act, recreation, accumulated leave and reserve, and housing needs, followed by debt service, and then internal service, which has fleet management underneath it. And then you move over to the right, and you have capital improvement funds, which consist of real estate excise tax, street construction, and capital improvement. And lastly, utilities, and there are three: stormwater and drainage, sewer, and water. This is a budget summary. This is a modified version of what Janela included in her presentation last week. She had two separate slides, one for 23, one for 24. But what we did for this presentation is you see 23 and 24 listed on the right-hand side, so you can see those compared to one another. But it really is the three primary components of the budget: the general governmental funds, the utility funds, and the capital funds. So the slide in front of you this evening, right currently, is the Budget in Brief. And as it relates to community outreach, and this ties specifically to the eight goals that I referenced earlier, this budget allows us to continue working with the Community and Economic Development Department to market and promote opportunities within the city and the town center, to collectively enhance and improve events such as Earth Day, Tour to Terrace, 3rd of July, National Night Out, and tree lighting. This funding will allow the continuance of the effective community outreach and improvements to city's social media presence, particularly on Instagram, which you've seen Ricky Fruschante do very well over the last year. And then the fourth item under community outreach is, we will continue to work with county, state, and federal partners to apply for and receive multiple grants and appropriations to address key infrastructure upgrades and capital projects, particularly Main Street Phase 2 revitalization. And since 236 is complete, we're really looking at 56th Avenue, Ballinger Park, Evergreen Playfield Turf Conversion, Veterans Memorial Park, and Transit Connection Corridor Project, followed by the bicentennial park playground projects. That's a segue into parks and recreation. And funding will continue to implement the recreation parks and open space, otherwise known as PROs, Ballinger and Veterans Park master plans, funding to implement the Transit Connection Corridor and Gateway Plaza projects, expand promotional and marketing materials, and then support special events. And we have those listed on the slide. For the Police Department, funding will allow us to continue community outreach and participation in events. Also, the Police Department is always focused on succession planning, pre-supervisor, supervisor, and management training. There is funding to maintain access and train on up-to-date less lethal, lethal force response equipment, and also funding for the retention of the K-9 physician. For the Public Works Department, they will continue to work on Main Street revitalization, Phase 2 design, and right-of-way phases. And what you see here is that on December 1st, Phil and his group in engineering were notified that the city was awarded, or has been awarded, $5 million in a grant for the Main Street project. And so I know that's been shared with you already, but the public may not be aware of this, so we want to share that with them this evening. And my compliments to Mark Seferian, who is our traffic engineer, and the entire engineering group, and Phil for working so diligently on this. There were only four communities that received the full $5 million amount, and we were one of those. So congratulations to our crew. Also, Public Works will continue to upgrade curb ramps to meet ADA standards. They work consistently with the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant on a variety of treatment issues, also reservoir recoding, and then water and sewer maintenance and construction. And then community and economic development. We will continue to streamline and improve the permitting process that's been underway over. over, particularly over the last year. Also, to complete and improve and implement the electronic application submittal, you'll notice a lobby in it. In the lobby, there is a kiosk, an online portal for people to come in and do things right here in the lobby. And then also move from paper to fully digital permit processing, and that's also underway. And we will continue to work with Sound Transit to implement the light rail amenities. I know you've seen these slides before, but some of the public may not have. And I've modified this since the last presentation, specifically for those line items that are related to ARPA funding, so that's American Recovery. I've highlighted the cells in light blue, and I ask that you pay attention to those because at the very end of these slides, all the line items where you see a highlighted light blue cell, I've summed those up at the end of the slide, so you can actually see how much money is being requested to fund line items related to ARPA. So we have the IT Strategic Plan and Structural Evaluation Consultant, and then the creation of the Communications Manager. This is the existing communications specialist, which will not be funded. Instead, that money will be going to the creation of the Communications Manager, and we have the difference for 2023 and 2024. That would be the general fund and an ongoing expense. And so based on last week's conversation, what I've done is I've created a category called Boards and Commissions. And based on the conversation, in parentheses, we put estimated needs. And the reason for that is that I have before you right now some of the language that I've created, and that's the handout you have. And it's to address what we think we heard last week. And the intent is to take the money, collectively put it under the City Managers Department. It is intended to not create a rigid source of funding, and these amounts are subject to change and not intended to be restricted. So I think that we heard that from the council as well. And not restricted to any one board or commission. And so what we've done here is, you know, should all of us go away, it's important to at least provide some reference for anyone who might be administering the budget. So you'll see the amounts that were included and referenced last week are still in this as a reference within the narrative. And so the $30,000 for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, $20,000 for the Arts Commission, and $10,000 for the Planning Commission, and then $20,000 for ARPA. And in the language that you have before you, myself and interim City Manager Andrew Neiditz met with our mayor and Mayor Protan this afternoon, and there is a recommended change to the Arts Commission amount. And so this will be for your consideration, and I will reference this in a later slide, and I'll explain why in a little bit. But there's been a request to increase that amount to $10,000. And the narrative would be rewritten so that it clarifies that this is to help update the arts and cultural plan, and then also be used to help fund and sponsor and host and manage events. So it's for all of those purposes. And then $10,000 for the Planning Commission. The request is to say funds can be used for community outreach and events, and training and conferences and travel. So just to provide a little more flexibility. There is a note that I, that we actually are proposing to include in the City Manager budget narrative. And what it says specifically for the audience is that the above-listed funds are not intended to represent a minimum or a maximum amount available and can be used to assist with efforts by and activities related to all boards and commissions. Additionally, any unexpended funds referenced above can be used to help pay for activities related to any board and commission. So we hope that this proposed language captures what we heard last week, and we will include that then in the City Manager narrative. And you're going to open this up for a public hearing, and then close the public hearing, and then discuss it, and then I can certainly answer any questions you might have related to this narrative at that time.
Stephen, can I just add a comment?
Yes.
When you mentioned the Arts Commission, you said the change was to $10,000. I think, to clarify, this is an increase of $10,000.
Right.
So it's the change from 20 to 30.
That's correct. And so you'll notice on the left-hand side under the Boards and Commissions, that's highlighted in a little darker green. And the reason for that is that these are line items. If supported by the city council, when you make your motion to adopt the budget, what you will say is, "I move to adopt the budget as amended." And by "as amended," you're referring to including these highlighted amounts in green into the budget ordinance, so that it's amended. I see a hand raised.
Do we get to ask questions before we open public hearing?
Sure.
All right. Councilmember Sam Moore and then Mayor Protan Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just thank you. Real quickly, I did want to clarify, though, if we are making a motion to adopt as amended, currently, the amounts here, what's listed is different than what we had talked. So in other words, if we wanted to add the $10,000 for the updated arts plan, that's not what's listed, so.
That's in a later slide.
Okay.
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier, that it's in a later slide, and I'll explain why I inserted it where I didn't. As I scroll through this, you'll see it later.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, so if we are making the motion to adopt as amended, that it includes this. Okay, very good, thank you.
And my question was for the Arts Commission. That's general fund, so that's not coming from ARPA?
Yeah. It's general. The only thing from ARPA is the $30,000.
They're all general funds. Those are not ARPA funds at all.
Yes, they're all GF, general fund.
Yeah, if you look in the right-hand column, the proposal is to come out of the general fund, 011. And what we mentioned last week is we anticipate that on a biennial basis, the needs of the boards and commissions will change. And so we would recommend that each March, at the beginning of the budget process or just prior to, that boards and commissions present what their needs will be to city administration and possibly to the city council, so that you know what might be forthcoming, so that when the budget is presented to the city council in the fall, you're already aware of their request. For instance, Arts Commission may not need $20,000, they may need $10,000, or they may ask for $40,000 or something like that. So that's what we're proposing.
So we're setting precedence right now with this. So where is it going to say that in two years, they'll have to apply for something?
We're not. We're recommending that that take place, that process. The process hasn't been established. We're just saying that at least at this point, you're budgeting, for example, the Arts Commission for the line item just under the Boards and Commission, at this point, you're just budgeting $20,000 for '23 and $20,000 for '24. And then as a part of the budget process for '25, '26, boards and commissions then would hopefully talk with the city administration, the city council, well ahead of the budget being presented to you, and then they would have their proposed request at that time.
And the only way I'd like to vote for it, if that was written down in the budget somewhere, because when council changes, a lot of times, we don't know that, and it sets a precedence upfront. This is a huge amount of money that we've never really done like this before, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, I certainly can add that note to, I can expand the note that you have before you, and maybe it'll be part two, note one and note two. And I can clarify that the intent is to have boards and commissions present their needs as a part of each biennial budget process.
And the reason I say that, we go through recessions, right? So it's like 11 a month period, and then 11 months to recover. And so there may be times where we allocate this money, but we're in a recession, and we may not be able to look at it in future years, so.
Okay, I can do that. We can do that.
Anyone else? Shall we open the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry.
I should note that Janela just clarified that Arts Commission advanced, the Planning Commission, the Recreation Parks advisory, she was able to get that into last week's ordinance. So you would not have to amend it with these three line items here.
Yeah, so the summary.
The summary on the previous slide, where I kind of revised that summary for '23 and '24, these amounts are included in it, except for the new amounts that he's going to tell you about later.
As mentioned before, for the Police Department, we're looking at $30,000, $15,000 for '23, '24 for e-bikes, and new community services officer, combining two part-time cadet positions into one, and that's an increase of $13,516 and $13,921 for '23 and '24. And it would be use of ARPA funds for the first two years, and then general fund ongoing. And the reason for that is there is a nexus related to public safety and the increases of crime and everything else over the last couple of years because of the pandemic, and the use of ARPA funds has been pretty common for cities for public safety. Human resources, there is funding for a consultant to conduct a salary survey that would come out of the general fund. And then economic development, we have economic conditions market analysis, amount of $100,000 one time, 2023, from ARPA. And then EASC, Mount Lake Terrace, Mount Lake Terrace Chamber Partnership. And I actually provided a handout to you last week of a modified EASC proposal in the amount of $49,000 for each year of the biennial budget. And then for parks and rec, we have $123,000 matching amount for the Child Care Stabilization Grant and Workforce Grant, and Jeff informed me that the council talked about that quite some time ago. And that would be a one-time expense for ARPA. And then add Special Events Coordinator position. That is intended to, at least for the first two years, be funded by ARPA, and then general fund ongoing. And you see amounts of rounding $84,000 and $87,000 for '23 and '24 respectively. And then also, there's a dedicated scholarship fund, ages 0 to 17, for camps and classes. There's currently a limit of $50 per quarter, and this is to provide assistance to more families. So we're proposing $10,000 for each year of the biennial budget process, ARPA funding for the first two years, and then general fund thereafter. Independence Day celebration, $20,000 and $20,000 in the general fund. Much-needed Rotary mower and leaf collector, one-time expenses in '23. And then a camera van with extension ability, that's $380,000. Emergency response trailer, an amount of $7,000. 30-inch asphalt zipper of $180,000. $18,000 of that would come from Fund, General Fund 111. And then Public Works shelf stock. I mentioned before that Public Works is proposing to purchase parts and supplies upfront in bulk, because they're finding it difficult when needing products to get them in a timely manner. And so this would allow them to go out and purchase, you know, parts that are needed more regularly in bulk, and that way, they'll have them when they need them instead of having to wait. Diagnostic Vehicle Electronic Scanner, $10,000, but not until 2024. That's Fund 511. And then there's funding for a new maintenance worker. This would be amounts of rounded, $89,000, $96,000 for '23, '24. This is general fund ongoing. And then a mechanical overlap for training purposes. I mentioned earlier that our mechanic will be retiring, and so the intent is to bring someone into the city and hire them and have them work alongside the existing mechanic, so that when that mechanic retires, they are fully skilled and ready to go, and that's an additional $104,000 in 2023, and it should be a negative $15,000 in 2024. And so what you see here are all the cells that I talked about earlier that were highlighted in blue. Total $485,000 rounded for '23, and $190,000 rounded for '24. So the council has, on occasion, asked us, how much money did we actually get from the federal government, and what's our balance, and how much would we have left if we were to accept all the proposed line items that are associated or to be funded by ARPA? So the city was allocated $5.9 million, $5,962,279 initially. The city council allocated $500,000 to Volunteers of America. That leaves a balance of $5,462,279. So all the line items that were highlighted in blue and proposed to be funded using ARPA funds for '23 add up to $485,224 for '23 and for '24, $190,170. So that would leave a balance of $4,786,885. So getting to Councilmember Wall's question earlier about the additional funding for ARPA, I'm sorry, for the Arts Commission, what you see here are two items. One is the Arts Commission, $10,000 in addition to the previously referenced $20,000. So it would be a total of $30,000 for '23 and $30,000 for '24. Then there's a line item here, and I know the council has talked about preparing a housing action plan quite a bit. And so Councilmember Wall reminded us that, you know, we really want to prepare this action plan, particularly about the same time you prepare the update to the comprehensive plan, if not before. And so I did subsequently have a conversation with Kristi Osborne, our Community Economic Development Director. She said that seems like an appropriate amount. However, she is intending to apply for grants from the state, and so we're hoping that we're successful, like we have been on other grants, in which case, then we wouldn't have to spend this money. But she said, yeah, that sounds really great. And so if you add the $100,000 for the Housing Action Plan, in addition to the previously referenced $485, you would have $585,000 worth of projects funded by ARPA. And the 2024 item or sale would stay the same at $190,000. So at the very bottom here, everything stays the same that I referenced earlier, except for the '23 column. If you look at the very bottom, it goes from $485,000 to $585,000. So the budget summary, this slide has been shown before.
One more, we have a question here.
Yes.
Mayor Protan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just backing up to, and it's just a suggestion, but the reason for this suggestion is because Mount Lake Terrace allocation, $500,000 to VOA, I think we should be putting the purpose rather than who it was to, because the purpose was for utilities. And the reason I think that's important clarification is because we're going to be considering during further ARPA discussion, potentially giving a chunk of those dollars to VOA for other purposes. And so rather than confusing the fact, let's talk about what the purpose was, which was to help our citizens with utilities.
Yeah, absolutely. And when the council holds a discussion exclusively for the purpose of discussing how ARPA funds will be allocated, we'll bring this back and we'll clarify what the specific purposes are for. This is just a reminder that the property tax increase will be 1% because the council actually adopted the ordinance for such. Wages and benefits, the budget includes a proposed 3% cost of living. Wages and benefits, the budget includes a proposed 3% cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees for '23 and '24, and subsequently for '25 through year '28, 2.5% each year. And I show a comparison here of what it compares to for the Police Guild and Teamsters, at least for 2023 and 2024. And then the General Fund balances, because of the new amounts that were discussed last week, the amounts on the bottom just changed very little for year 2023 and went down by, I think, about $100,000 for year 2028. And I'd like to conclude by just kind of highlighting what Janella did last week. And this is a balanced operating budget. It's sound, underlying financial and management assumptions and policies. It's consistent with the adopted financial policies, not using one-time funds for ongoing operations. Action strategies and preventative measures are working by the level of ending fund balance, particularly for years '23 and '24. There is the ability to maintain current level of service in public safety, parks, recreation, street maintenance, development services. We will continue to focus on community goals and objectives, and there are no program or service reductions in this budget. And there are strong reserves, 2% contingency, 2.5% General Fund reserve, 2.5% strategic reserve, equipment reserve, and also accumulated leave reserve. And actually, Janella presented amounts related to that amount earlier. So that concludes my presentation, and the council could ask me questions now, or I can answer questions after you open it up to the public for comments.
Are there any questions before Councilmember Sonmore?
So you just said that we had, well, I'll start with the first one. I'm not sure why the Arpa fund is in the General Fund revenue. It says that our budget is inflated, which it can't be because of that extra $5 million. And so to me, it's confusing why it isn't under the other financing sources because it almost has been redundant in the reporting for the General Fund. And the suggestion I was made for is on page 46, that we contain everything that we're spending in the Arpa fund, we map under that so we know at any time what we have for Arpa funds, what we spent and what we haven't.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Yes, thank you. So just to go over, the General Fund revenue, the light item for Arpa, I just am asking the question, I'm not sure why it's placed where it is in the General Fund revenue. If you look on page 41 and then 42, I'm wondering why it wasn't placed under other financing sources, because this is a one-time source that has to be used in that purpose. So it's inflating our overall budget by $5 million, and it should be in a one-time sourcing funding, such as the other financing source. And so it would be, I think it should be moved over into the operating expenses because it gets confusing when it goes into the General Fund, because those funds are one-time and they won't be coming back. So it's almost like you're doing double duty in your General Fund and doing unnecessary financing reporting. Whether, if you were to keep it all on page 46, under the American Recovery Act Fund, then it would show exactly, like Brian was talking about, who it goes to, where it's going to, because I was getting confused on some of the items that they're showing you. You're using Arpa funds and then you're using General Funds, so it would behoove us a little bit better if we put everything under American Recovery Act, so we know exactly where those funds are and we're not inflating our overall budget.
So my suggestion of what we were doing was, if you look at this financial forecast, I don't know if you can't see it on the screen, it's too small. Oof. Let me try and move this. Can you see any of this on your screen? Okay, let me make it smaller.
And have we talked to auditors about how we report the Arpa funds and the General Fund?
Yeah, it's got its own line item, and we're actually using the funding.
Should it have its own light on it since it's a one-time funding source?
Yes, it's got its own line item in the General Fund revenues, and it's under Arpa. And if you look in here, in this, it says local recovery funds, $5.4 million. And then if you go into the expenditures, you can see that we broke it out, the transfers out to the Arpa fund of $4.7 million. And then this is the expenditure line for the Arpa, $500,000. That's what we, you guys did an amended budget for $500,000 for VOA. We did spend that and send that to them. Then there's the $485,000 on its own line item, plus the $190,000. The transfer that's going to go to the Arpa fund is that $4.7 million that he references on the slides. Of course, it's going to be reduced now by, it's going to be $4.6 because that other $100,000 that we're going to send over. So everything, as long as we are reporting and we have line items and we're keeping track of it with the feds, it'll be fine.
I'll just kind of go on the cuff of, I'm not sure, because I'd recommend it the other way, but I'd also recommend page 46 be updated on how to track the Arpa funds. And I guess I wouldn't put it as a line item going all the way across, because then on the overall page, on page 41, we're still at $34 million, and you transferred that out. And then if you go over to page 42, you also have the one-time expenditures in the General Funds, so it also inflates 2024 by $100,000, roughly $141.
This $4.9 million is actually the transfer in to the fund, and you can see that nothing has been expended.
I'm not going to argue with you, but I'm just going to disagree, so.
Yeah, nothing has been expended in the Arpa fund, and I left it purposely that way because we weren't really sure what we were going to spend it on.
It just inflates it, though, but it's expenditures, I see that, but it's still, that's a one-time cost, and it just doesn't reflect the budget, like I feel it should reflect the budget.
It's a transfer out, though, so in the General Fund.
Right, but it's still, but why was it, it should be all at one time, and it shouldn't be in 2024 transferring out again.
Yeah, and it is. It's in 2023 transferring out.
But you have a transfer out, too, for 2024 proposed.
No, I only have it as a one-time transfer out for Arpa of four, well, it says 4.9 here, but now it's 4.7.
But then underneath it, it says one-time expenditures for Arpa.
Yeah, and that's the expenditures that we're spending right now that is on the slide that was presented. So you can see, let's see, here's the slide.
It's just confusing in the overall budget scheme of it.
You can see the breakdown here, the $485,000 on this slide. And then if you look at that PDF, there's the $485,000. That's the one-time expenditure.
It's just, we'll agree to disagree on that.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I feel it's completely different on that piece. And then I just have one other question, and we'll come back to that when we do the auditing at the end of the year. But the General Fund operating deficit that's shown on page 42, under operating revenue sources and expenditure, so you just mentioned that we had a balanced operating budget, but in 2024, it shows a deficit. And so that's where I'm concerned about. And then have we talked about what we're going to do different to get out of that deficit?
You can actually see on the ending fund balances, the contingency is $423,000 in the reserves, and then you have your unreserved amount down there.
But, and the reason I bring that up, too, is if you look at our financial policies on page 185, it says that further ongoing operating program costs will not exceed the amount of ongoing revenue to the finance of those costs. So basically, what I'm hearing it saying, that if we're in the deficit, that's showing like $416,000 in 2024, because that's what it says right here, it's meaning that the city does not have enough money ongoing in the revenue to finance its ongoing programs, but then you're bringing it out from somewhere else?
No, that is the current revenues less your current expenditures, the current year.
So can you explain that to me more? Because it looks as if we are addressing the first two years, but we're really not looking at the full six-year projection of what we really need. And so it's kind of asking the council to go against their financial policies?
Well, if you look at the bottom line here for ending fund balances, reserved for, you have a contingency of 2%, a reserve of 2.5% of your operating expenditures, and then you have your unreserved, underfunded amount.
Then why is it showing a deficit?
It's not when you do, when you look at the math for the unreserved, the 2% operating expenditures, do you see that line, the reserved for?
The 2.5 operating expenses?
Yes. We do have enough in reserves for that, to cover that. Up above, in this line above, that is your current operating revenues, over or under your current operating expenditures. I guess that could be written there.
Okay, so just so I understand, you're saying this budget completely, absolutely is balanced, and it is balanced in the operating budget as well?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as covering the reserves, meeting the reserve requirements per our policy.
So it's reserve money, right?
Yes.
So where's the future money coming in for that?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, right now we're using our fund balance.
Right, so it, and I bring it up, and it's not mad at you, it's just frustrating with the budget. It's that council is not supposed to vote on a budget that is not completely balanced without using contingency fund. It's something that's in our financial plan. And so it just sounds like we're kicking it a little bit farther down the road than we should be. Because if you look at it, we're going over to $800,000 by the end of 2028.
Okay, this is a biennial budget?
But we still, but I know we still look at the two years, but, and I bring this up because this has happened to us before. And so we look at the two-year, but we're not looking out to the six-year, and all of a sudden, we get hit and we find out that we don't have enough.
But we are. If you look at the bottom line, you have your, we meet the reserve requirements because we have the 2.5% of our operating expenditures is covered every year. We have our 2% of our operating expenditures are covered, which leaves us an unreserved amount at the end of 2028 of $1.5 million.
No, I do get it, and so, and I have studied it, but I'm just going to let it go online for that.
Did you have something to add? Okay, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I understand the concern, and I share a lot of the concerns that Councilmember Sonmore is raising, I think what you're pointing out is, you know, look, we're still in the positive, we're still in the black at the end of the day in six years.
Yes.
But the concern is that that ending fund balance is reducing.
Yes.
And so, yes, it's balanced and in the black at the end of six-year period, but the concern is we're still spending more.
And that's.
And over a 10-year period, we're going to find ourselves in the red. I think it's kind of the direction that we're going, if we don't make adjustments somewhere along the way. So I share the concern that that's something we need to be aware of going forward. And I also share some of the, share the concerns on how, I mean, on the Arpa funding, and especially when it comes to one-time versus ongoing expenditures and taking, for instance, the DEIC is a perfect example of something that we're going to need likely to continue funding, yet we're only dedicating it for the first, for this budget through DEIC, I'm sorry, through Arpa funding. And in the next budget cycle in two years, we're going to need to do it through the General Fund. And so it's, I.
It's masking different things. And I've had this happen before, so that's what I just, I'm trying to be very clear about, that we do not want to mask any financial issues that are out there, because it looks like the issue of the policy is the operating deficit project in 2024 that is expected to grow in 2028 over $800,000, which it says here. And then you need to address the budget proposal if it's not consistent with the city manager adopted finances policy, which was on this back page here. And so that's what I'm trying to get at, is that we're not masking anything. And that's why I asked with the funding, that we know in two years, we're not masking another issue that's saying that we're spending way too much. And so we just have to make sure those operating expenses are covered. But in here, it's a deficit. And so that's what you look at when you look at the budget. So that's where I'm headed with that. It's on page 42. So it's actually not a deficit then, because it's covered with the 2% operating expenditures, is what you just mentioned.
Correct.
Under the ending fund balance.
Correct.
So then why are these deficits? So then, just to appease me one more time, why are they listed as deficits then, under the middle of it on page 42?
Those are the current revenues less the current expenditures.
Okay.
We're, we need to open the public, I guess you're done with the presentation, right? And we need to, unless there's further questions or issues, I guess, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, then put the budget on the table for further discussion, correct? So I guess with that.
Okay, all right, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. And city clerk, has there been any written questions, testimony?
Yes, we do have one member of the audience who'd like to speak, Dale Jeremiah. And you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Wright. Fellow council members, I wanted to speak in support of the $700,000 on page 178 for the new roof and HVAC for our clubhouse. That building was built in 1989, so it's, you know, it's 33 years old, it certainly needs a new roof and a new HVAC. And I guess I want to remind everyone, you know, that we're in this building because of what happened to the roof in the old city hall. Poor design and poor maintenance, and then the building fell down, or the ceiling fell in. So thank you, finally, we're going to have that building, you know, it can't be replaced. And it's certainly a gem for our city, and we're very fortunate that we have the senior center group there, because if they weren't, it would just be sitting as an empty building. But anyway, thank you for that. It's on page 178. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Is there anyone in the online audience who would like to give public testimony? Going once, going twice? There's no one.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed.
All right.
Now, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And point of clarification, do, so if we move to adopt the 2023-24 biennial budget ordinance as amended, that includes? That's the, that's the as amended part, correct? Okay, and then, and then as far as the budget notes, budget notes one and two that we were discussing previously as far as giving direction to ensure next budget cycle, we're gonna be asking the commission, boards and commissions for their input before we, so that is part, that is, is that also included in the as amended?
Yes, what I'll do is the narrative that's before you, I'll amend it as described earlier and then add a note, and I'll call it note, note two. And just reference that it is the intent to have boards and commissions present what they need and what programs they relate to, to city administration as part of the next biennial budget.
Great, okay, then.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the 2023-24 biennial budget ordinance as amended, second, sorry.
Yeah, we'll second and then we can have more discussion.
Yeah.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in, no, we don't. Discussion is next. So go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you. What an amazing job you've done in such a condensed amount of time to be able to do that. So it's like high potent and just applaud you for that. That said, I just want to, I'm gonna frame this as an optic concern, but it's also a precedent concern, which is to say, one, I want to be on record, I'm very happy to see all of the commissions reflected in this budget and receiving some type of support from the city. And I suspect they'll continue doing their own fundraising, depending on who you are and how that works out, which is still exciting. However, they weren't assigned before, and so now I'm seeing for the first time that they're assigned to budgets. So I don't know particularly what general fund 011 is, and you don't have to answer that right now because it's not gonna change what I have to say. I just want to walk us through this, and again, I'm gonna frame it as an optic concern, but again, it's more precedence. And we actually heard elements of that, which is, I can guarantee this council won't look the same in 2023 because our esteemed colleague won't be here. So right there, that's just a reminder to Councilmember Sonmore's point, that when new councils come in, priorities change, dynamics change, and everything changes. So that's where I would stop and pause and say, I'm just curious if we can walk through, if this is a good decision, to leave the DEIC money in the ARPA world where the others are listed with the general fund 011. And I'll just kind of walk down the line of where I go, that's interesting when I look at how this was presented, the grids. When we look at, so let me acknowledge first that I recognize DEIC might be in the ARPA because of the consultant, but other than the consultant, the rest of the needs seem to match up with the other commissions and their reasoning. Perhaps travel's the one that's different for the planning commission, but nonetheless, you expanded theirs as well to make sure they have room for events and public outreach and stuff like that. So there's enough mucky muck in there to say, well, they're all the same with the exception of the DEIC needing a consultant to get going. So maybe that was why they're in ARPA and the others are in general fund. But then as I move down the line and I look at the police and the special events, those were listed as ARPA slash general fund ongoing. So perhaps my discussion could end if the DEIC said ARPA slash general fund ongoing. I don't think it's going to end there. Just want to point out that those two different line items where that's actually listed, ARPA slash general fund ongoing. Those are positions. So I imagine you're putting that in there so the person who takes the job doesn't think they have, out of a job in two years and find themselves hoping that this council is of makeup that agrees that they should be funded, right? Going back to my initial point of this precedence, but again, optic is all I'm looking at for the moment. But then when we jump down to an actual study, now I'm thinking about how we framed, how we could use the ARPA money, which is one-time expenses. We look at HR and they're doing an actual salary study at 40,000, which is 10,000 more than the first year. I recognize it's 60,000 overall between the two for DEI, but there's 40 of it right there, but that's listed in the general fund. It doesn't have a dash after, it just says general fund. But I presume that's a one-time expense, so just kind of putting that out there. The closest line to that, in the spirit of, I don't like to present problems, I like to present, hey, this is interesting and here's a potential solution. There's 40,000 there potentially with the HR salary, but then when we move over to the police e-bikes, which I recognize it says bikes, racks, training, uniforms, maintenance, it only goes out for two years. I don't know if there's a need in the year, the third year, if you will. But there's another 30 and 50, excuse me, 30 and 15, so 45. That's, once again, general fund, GF. So just kind of putting it in there to say, that's interesting. I don't know if those aren't or are one-time expenses, but they don't appear to be anyone's actual salary. It's the actual e-bike itself and everything that goes along with being able to ride it, I suspect, and all that goes along with that. That would usually be the end, but again, now I jump back to, oh, I just said, oh, DEIC, the one thing they had different was a consultant. But then you've presented, and rightly so, I think, the art commission, in essence, it's gonna have a consultant, I presume, for that 10,000 to update whatever it is we said they were going to update, I guess, quite a bit, but nonetheless, they're listed as updating their comp plan or their version of their plan, but that too is actually listed separately, but that too falls under the general fund 011, which again, I presume is a one-time expense. So it goes back to the question of optic. Does that make sense to have the commissions on the general fund and the DEI under ARPA, but at the end of the day, they all seem to line up more or less the same? And the one thing that almost stood out was actually corrected by bringing in the consultant for the art commission, but that's not going under ARPA, that's going under the general fund 011. Now, at the end of the day, I'm happy that they're all funded, right? I want to make sure that's clear, but I also want to recognize that some are funded on a solid line, others are on a one-time money line, and then there are other things in that seem inconsistent with the idea of how we could use the ARPA fund with this idea of one-time expenses. So hopefully you followed that, that to begin with, it's an optic concern. Why is one commission othered, literally, in the sense of off that funding stream? And then at the end of that all, the precedence of that, which is to say, if we are committing this money for all of the commissions, do we actually jeopardize the contribution that is assigned to the DEIC by leaving them in the ARPA? And again, I'm just thinking, we'll have different folks, different configurations. I recognize we don't have a crystal ball to know what the economy's going to look like, but again, I just want to make sure that we've at least acknowledged that that's happening because I, as I have seen it, others will see it and will have similar questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
I was just gonna say, and then for the arts commission, so now they're, we're having the hotel motel tax, so their budget will be about $35,000 to get all together. So are you just saying, because that's why I asked this earlier, I thought these were all ARPA funds here, I thought the whole thing was part of ARPA funds for boards and commissions and we were doing it for two years? Is that, but you're saying that you rather see this one go away and become a general fund?
And thank you for that clarification. I'm, I'm okay with if they're all on ARPA, they're all on ARPA. It's just this idea that we have the commissions and then we have, one is not like the other. And that's generally their job is to point out that it's an inclusion. So just, again, I just presume there's rhyme and reason behind that, but I'm, I am okay with us putting everything into ARPA or putting everything in the general fund. I was focusing on bringing the one up versus the three down, and I'm just using up and down arbitrarily, it's really hard line, soft line, whatever language makes the most sense. Full-time money, one-time money, whatever works. It could go either way, but I just think that they all four should be the same.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I was under the impression that in two years, everybody comes and asks for a budget money. And that'll come under general fund at that time.
And, can I respond? Yeah, so maybe there is the answer. I don't know how that works. In my world, general fund means it's in perpetuity until we've run out of money versus ARPA. And again, I'm just.
What I heard was in two years, every commission comes in front of the city council with a budget in hand, asking for X amount of dollars, and then that'll be the next two years. Was I correct on that? I don't know.
Yeah, perhaps I can provide some clarification. When the city manager's office first presented the budget on November 7th, the only line item under boards and commissions was the contracting with the consultant to assist the DEIC. So that was the city manager's only requested amount related to a board and commission. And so at that time, we had identified the use of ARPA funding for that purpose. Since that time, the city council has requested additional funding for other boards and commissions. And so the council certainly could choose to use general fund or ARPA funding for the other boards and commissions. At the time we presented it, we only had DEIC and we saw a nexus between ARPA and the needs of DEIC as it relates to the community. And the $30,000 amount is because as a new commission, we did see a need to bring on a professional consultant who has expertise in dealing and working with the diversity, equity, and inclusion commissions. And so we don't expect a need for 30,000 every year. This was just for the first two years, just to kind of get them off the ground, get their plan together, get their work plan approved by the DEIC, and also to host some events or invite speakers who often cost money. So, and then as far as the amounts being different from one another, for me, I don't see that as, I could see someone saying, hey, why don't they all get the same amount? But I don't think the need is the same for all the boards and commissions. And so I think that's where we're proposing as a part of the biennial budget process in 2024 for years 25 and 6, that the boards and commissions come to the, to the city manager and to the executive leadership team and hopefully the council as well, and present what their proposals are for the next two years and then what funding it will take to actually help implement whatever goals they want to achieve.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Yeah, just to stand, I don't want to hear another question and have to come back to this. Somewhere between the two, your response to me and your clarification right now, I'm not concerned about the dollar amount. That's been, I think, vetted for all month about how much, a little, and all that. It's maybe closer to where you were just describing that, that just because it says general fund doesn't mean that that continues. And I would just keep it simple. What I've been hearing is ARPA is not budgeted in, if you will, whereas general fund is accounted for. And that's where I go, so let's make sure that as long as somewhere in this budget, just like we're adding narrative, that we point out that, oh no, the DEI wasn't just for two years, not the dollar amount, our actual support of them versus the other three commissions that have been budgeted into the general fund, right? Same thing as me saying I personally would have put the 3rd of July event into the ARPA funds to make sure that's what we want to do, because I don't know that we all agreed that's what we should do, even though I love the 3rd of July. But to me, that's now been locked in, it's moving forward until we stop being a city or we run out of money and can't do anything. But again, I'm being facetious, but I'm also kind of pointing out how an optic look, general fund means we knew you were counting and we baked a cake. ARPA in this cake is, well, we had an extra cake, good thing you came. And that's not the same. That's where I'm at, right? It was like, they both got cake, but one was planned for, the other one, hey, well, lucky us, we have a cake here for you, right? And that, that's where I'm like, that just seems like, that's not the inclusion that we're looking for. But at the end of the day, if it doesn't matter when we get to the end of this biennium, everybody's got to come back and justify their money, then I can maybe live with that. But I do, I don't want to downplay optic. Most things actually are unfortunately based on optic, and then no one wants to get into the details, but I just want to make sure that we've at least talked about it when someone comes back at this and they say, oh, I see how you came to that conclusion. So.
From what I thought, it was, everybody gets a clean slate in two years. Because the arts commission doesn't automatically get whatever it is now. Because if they didn't use it, in a way, but it's also, it's not 30,000 for the arts commission, 30,000 for this, because it's pooled. And so if, if one year, the DEIC needed more money because they're doing special events, blah, 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 then they would use more. Another year, the arts commission might use more money. Another year, the planning commission might have a big event. So that's why I thought that we're pooling this thing.
Yeah, I think the slide that is on the screen provides some clarification and response, I think in part to Councilmember Woodard's comment about, is this ongoing? Is this one-time? Where's the funding coming from? For example, if you look at the strategic plan, you see 75,000 for 2023. It's very clear that it's a one-time expense, whereas if you look at the next line item, it talks about general fund ongoing because that's the creation, creation of a position. And we're just showing the differences in the salaries and benefits. And so you'll see general fund ongoing and for the next four line items, we just have general fund or ARPA. And it's listed for these years and doesn't say ongoing because it gets to, I think, your comment, Mayor, where, and our note that we discussed earlier, where commissions will come back in two years and they will propose a plan and then related expenses for consideration by the council. Does that help?
Just having the conversation's been helpful. Again, I want to make sure that we acknowledge that that looks different. And again, I just know that that reads funny, but what I'm hearing is it's a lot more complicated than I'm giving it credit than it just being ongoing versus, you know, bonus money if I look at ARPA that way. I don't want DEIC being cast as, well, this was bonus money, that's why they got it. The other ones, we immediately go to funding. I just don't think that's gonna sit well with a community that's not really as deep into these conversations as we are. They're gonna look at that and go, what's the one versus the other? And again, I'm not about the dollar amounts. I get the whole sharing, I've been here, I've been listening. I think most of these folks, with the exception of the planning commission, are on here because I was trying to find a way to make sure everybody was met. And planning commission was a commission I forgot about. So in that regard, I'm comfortable with the dollar amounts. I just want to make sure the funding gave the message that we as a city want to project. So thank you for the clarification and the conversation.
Anyone else? All right, Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands going up, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just first of all, backing up to the first comment that Councilmember Woodard made is, thank you, great job, appreciate all the work that's been gone into this, especially in that condensed period of time. It is amazing what you were able to pull off considering where we started from. And so, great job, thank you. I do share the concerns that, that as far as, yeah, but I guess at the end of the day, so just to clarify, I will be voting yes on this motion as amended, or the budget as amended, because at the end of the day, we're funding the programs and need to be funded, we're doing what we need to do. How we go about doing it and the funding sources, I, personally, I would have done it a little differently. That's just me. I would have liked to see anything ongoing coming in specifically saying general fund. So in other words, DEIC, I think should have come from the general fund, part of it. But that's, that gets me back to why, what I was suggesting earlier as far as, okay, the work plan or strategic plan update, that's a one-time expense. So that should be separated differently than the events, which are ongoing. So that should be separated differently than the events, which are ongoing. But again, I'm, I'm not going to nitpick that piece of it, because at the end of the day, we're getting what we need to get, we're funding what we need to fund, we're, we're doing what we need to do, we're achieving the goals that we set out to achieve. And so that's, I guess, I'm looking at the end result. That said, and so that, yes, great work, let's, let's do this, let's get it, let's get it, get it done. But that said, I do agree with Councilmember Woodard as far as the optics. I'm concerned about that. I, and so I want to, as much as anything, just as you say, we've had this conversation on record, we're making the point, we're, we're aware of the optics, but we're excited about the results. And so, yeah, I would have done a few things differently, but I, but I'm excited about the, the direction we're going, what we're doing. That said, I also share Councilmember Sonmore's concern about the future direction. I think, I, I agree with what the point you're making, that is, six-year period, six-year five forecast, which is what our budget policies say, is we're, we need to be planning for a six-year forecast. And we are balanced and in the black at the end of the day in six years. But in 10 years, we're, we're going to be cutting it close, or, or in the red, running red. And that's the concern that I think is also something that we need to be aware of, and we are passing this potentially, I assume, pass, hopefully passing this budget tonight, but recognize the challenges that we face in this, beyond the six years. And we are going to have to be budget conscious and make wise decisions as we go along through this process and as we're adopting future budgets, because every, in two years, when we're adopting the next budget, we will be looking at that six-year forecast, that we'll be cutting it close and going in a, a direction that we need to be concerned about. So we just need to be aware of what we're doing as we're doing it. And that's, I guess, again, just making sure that we have that discussion, making sure that we are aware of it, and then making sure that we're educating future council members or future councils on a, on a regular basis to make sure that we are all aware of the concerns that, that have been raised tonight. With that, I encourage us to adopt this budget as amended.
Okay. My notes here. Oops, it's over here.
And can I just make one more comment?
Go ahead.
And I, one of the things that I want to make sure that we look at is understanding why we have the 2%. And also, the main thing is understanding the operating resident, revenue coming in is sufficient to maintain our services. And that's always where we're looking at. And that's something that we always have to be, our overall goal of our budget, or one of them, I should say.
So are you going to make the motion?
Motion's on the table, there's some discussion.
Discussion. Okay, now we can vote. I have my notes in several different places, so.
He's looking first.
So we're going to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a new budget. Okay. Oops, where's my? Next is the council liaison reports. Let's see, who should I start with? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. On Thursday, the 1st, I attended a work-study session. Friday, the 2nd, I attended a tree lighting. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I attended the Christmas tree lighting on Friday, and thank you for everyone for being there. That was a great event, the first time at City Hall. And thank you for staff, for helping staff that, and to all the children that came up and the high school band that came, they were wonderful as well. I also want to say congratulations to the city for the 5 million second phase for, I always want to call it downtown, but, and Mark Savarian for doing the grant. So thank, a shout out to him. And then I was going to ask, I'm assuming the city isn't having their annual city breakfast this year? So in honor of not having it, I just want to give a shout out to all our staff, because that was the time where we thank the, the staff for all their hard work. So I just wanted to send a shout out to all our staff members, since we're not having an annual employee breakfast this year. And the last one is, I'd like to request the senior center to come in to get, do a report out. I've been monitoring their activities, and the activities are still extremely low, and they're stating for COVID. And I'm understanding some of the other senior centers are doing that as well, but some are coming back a little bit more, and I just want to find out what's going on with the senior center. And that's all I have to report.
I understand they have a new director now, too.
Oh, good.
Which we have not met. All right. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was at our work session on December 1st, and also had the privilege of attending the tree lighting event on the 2nd. And I will echo Councilmember Sonmore's appreciation for staff and all of the work that they did to get ready for that, as well as all of the work that they have done around our community over the course of the last week with the weather. I saw Tim Nye and a bunch of his crew today chipping ice off of, you know, disabled spots at the rec pavilion, and just know that that cleanup continues, and just am incredibly appreciative for all of the extra hours and the work that's gone in over the last week to get us all around where we need to go. Quick note with that, with rain forecast this week, I think it's a good reminder of our adopted drain program and taking some time to clear out paths to drains before that, those rains come to hopefully avoid some, you know, urban flooding sorts of situations. And so if you have a drain, please take care of your drain. And if you haven't adopted a drain, I'm sure we would be happy to tell you where the nearest drain near you is that maybe needs a little extra love. So I think that is all that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 22nd, I participated in the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County's coffee chat. It was on behavioral health. I strongly encourage everyone, they record them and send them out, you can find on their webpage, or I can send it to the city clerk who can send it out. But with us having, at current record, two different organizations come to us aiming to help in the behavioral health field. I think it'd be good backdrop for us, because they took a broader conversation, but you can hear your city's story in that. And EASC, EASC will be a partner with us, I believe. We just voted on that budget. So you can also see some of the work that they do, if you haven't had a chance to attend one of their coffee chats. On the 22nd, I had the honor of having my first one-on-one with our city manager. It was a great conversation. I think he listened most of the time, that's why it was great. Okay, I want to see you laughing today. No, it really was a great conversation, I look forward to our next one. I, too, was at the study session on the 1st. I had the honor of being at the tree lighting ceremony, of course, on the 2nd. And there, I want to pause and double back and first say thank you to our resident Dale for coming in and giving that public comment. I have had the honor of meeting our new senior center director, and I can tell you, she was very nervous to meet me, but then left with us to have lunch, which is just to say, reminded her that the senior center, senior center is in our hearts and minds, and more importantly, in our actions. And so I hope that she heard that $700,000 reference, because that's buried deep in that budget, and we've never talked about it because of, it was given to us that we would be moving forward on that. But she called me to the carpet, and I reflected back that, hey, we are there for you, and this is another example of that. What I had told her at the time is, we're not building a trail that ends at your building because we're trying to defund you. But nonetheless, I do echo Councilmember Sonmore's request to have the senior center come and present to us and just say hello. Now, tree lighting, a little bit more about that. Want to make sure that not only does the city staff get an applause, but all of you up here also get an applause as well. I had the honor of standing there, and granted, I was a little flashy, so it was easy to maybe spot me, but I had a resident come up and say, hey, I recognize you from the city council. And of course, I always pause and say, is that a good thing? See, thank you, I get this group laughing, not this side, I noticed. But nonetheless, oh yeah, it was a great thing. And what his message to us was how accessible all of us are. So I just want to make sure we hear that, because I don't think we get enough of that. And I see you all out in the community. I know I give these long reports, and everybody thinks I'm everywhere, but I know you're doing that same thing, and it was just really heartening. Heartening? If you can be disheartened, you can be heartened, right? So you'd be heartened to know that residents see that as well. But that also was a kudos to our staff, because he had an idea that he wanted to figure out, can it happen? Which is this beautiful new turf field. By his recollection and observation, it only appeared to have the lights on when someone rented the field, but what if I just wanted to come and practice with my kid, which is what he was doing? I was able to immediately first point out Jeff and Ken to him, and to say, please do bring your comments directly to them. His name is Tim. But I said I would also make sure I bring it here as well. And it's just, again, just to say that that was an idea that he didn't bring to me sheepishly, but that he knew exactly who he could bring it to, which was any of us. I just happened to be the one standing there, it really meant a lot to him. And that we actually heard and got an answer by, by the end of that night, that the parks team is thinking about that already. But again, just this idea of us being accessible, which is a way to double back and say thank you to the staff. It begins by you doing great work, and then people want to be involved, and then they have questions. So it's a cycle that continues, but it's a beautiful cycle if you step back and look at it. The last thing that I will bring to the table is, on Saturday, the 3rd, that next day, we have a stuff-a-bus event going on. I only use that to let you know that Representative Larson was there, who of course is a big fan of ours, done a lot of great work for us, but in the redistricting, is no longer our representative, it's now, yes, you all know how that plays out. But nonetheless, as I was standing there, he once again said, happy birthday, Mount Lake Terrace. So I'm passing that message on to all of you, as he asked me to do. But at the end of that, he asked a really interesting question, which was, he said, you have any projects that will be wrapping up in two years when you get to your 70th? And that's where I want to say thank you to the council, thank you to the staff, to give us those talking points. I immediately said, yes, we hope to have that final stretch of, I was much better in the moment, and I'm blanking on the city, Main Street done. Which, you know, he didn't do anything with that, other than to nod his head, but it was nice to know where I was coming from, was helpful. I didn't know we had that 5 million, that would have been a nice little kicker, that's on me, because the timing was there, I just didn't know, but that's not neither here nor there. But it was, again, just to be able to share that with him. And then I also doubled back, as Ballinger is near and dear to my heart, and saying, Ballinger as well, which is just to remind us that those representatives all work together, so it was good, I think, for him to hear, oh, yeah, you got your 70th birthday coming up, you have these monies in the pipeline, he's supportive of some of that work, it's not all of that work. But again, having that talking point, I didn't miss that moment, because it had nothing to do with it, and for the record, I had antlers on my head, so I don't even know if he was taking me seriously, I know he was. But it's still just kind of reminding us that having those talking points matter, because every step, every stretch of the way, you might be able to say something that is in tune with the others and adds up to support in the long run. Because I do think that he kind of went, oh, that's interesting, that, that could be ready by your 70th, which would be really cool, especially the undergrounding. And that will be the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember McCardo?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended Thursday's workshop, as well as Friday's tree lighting ceremony, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, I spent the holidays with the family and spent the past week learning about different lifestyles and cultures. Concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. So for my report, on the 28th of last month, I attended the Snohomish County Mayor's meeting. And on the 29th, I attended the HART Housing Affordability Regional Task Force for Snohomish County meeting. And on the 30th, we had a power outage here, and we didn't have access to the email, city email, so I missed the county executive and mayor's meetings, but I did get a new link sent to my other email, so that I did make it to the AWC Mayor's Exchange a little later that day. And then on the 1st of December, I attended the Board of Health Executive Committee meeting, and then I attended the Community Transit Meeting. On the 2nd, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum, and they're, they're sending in a letter to the legislature for transportation in, in the North King County area. And I was really, really glad to see that Snohomish County was still mentioned in their letter, because I really, really pushed for that, having been a part of Seashore for the past 14 years, to remind them that we are bordering them, I am in their meeting, and we need to start talking about Snohomish County, and it's still there. That evening, I attended the tree lighting, and I really want to thank the staff and the volunteers for, for this. I was so happy and amazed at how happy everybody was. Everyone was smiling, everybody was talking to each other, the atmosphere was just amazing. I know I've attended many, many tree lightings in the past, and it's all been jovial, but this, this year had a different, I wouldn't say tone, because that's, but it, but it was amplified quite a bit. Maybe it's the new location? I don't know. But everyone seemed to be having so much fun. Maybe we couldn't see them very much in the old field, because the lighting wasn't very good. But the lighting was great over here. A lot of people took video photographs and everything and posted it, so it, I was really impressed. So thank you. Oh, that's the end of my report. I have more to add, but that's going to come in new business. All right, so next is the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to first congratulate all of you on your action in turning the proposed budget into your budget, as a reasonable biennial approach to the city's future for the next two years. So congratulations on a job well done. I really want to thank not just Stefan and Janella, but the entire executive team, who spent literally hundreds of hours before I arrived, putting this budget together. So the city managers usually take credit for the budget, because it's called the city manager's budget proposal until the council adopts it. In this case, the city manager came in as it was being proposed. So I really want to publicly thank Stefan and Janella and the executive team for all the work that they put in and for the job that you did this evening. I'd like to reference your, Councilmember Sonmore mentioned employee recognition in terms of breakfast tradition. I had heard that while that's not being done, and of course, post-COVID, a lot of things are changing, but there, there will be, on a department-by-department basis, recognition given to employees as the year is ending. And I personally, in the few weeks that I've been here, have been going department-to-department, meeting employees, and so I intend, over the next few years of this year, to acknowledge how much employees are appreciated. I must admit, with the storm event of the, of this last week, it was an opportunity for employees to, to come together, and in particular, the Public Works Department and the Police Department. I am extremely impressed by the number of comments that I've heard from citizens by email or by telephone, who are just more than impressed by what they noticed was an improved approach to, well, one, one woman, whose address I forget right now, but she has been a resident of this city for 30 years, lives on a dead-end street. She says this is the first year that her street was plowed, so that she and her neighbors could come in and go out. And she was literally astounded, and she ran after the, the truck to thank the, I think the, the employees were probably afraid what, what was happening, but they, she was wanting to thank them personally for what they're doing. So that's just one example. But having worked in other cities and having worked through other storms, I think this city handled it really well. So hats off to employees, not just for the storm, but for what they do. So, hats off to employees, not just for the storm, but for what they do all year long. And the last item I just want to bring to your attention is, you have before you a summary sheet regarding the city council vacancy, and I'd like to see this, with your blessing, of course, launch this week, but with Councilmember McCardle resigning later this month, we have a, you should have it in front of you, there's a two-page memo from me to the council, which basically outlines the qualifications for city council candidates by state law, and the process for advertising, where we would be doing it, and then what the interview process would look like with a timeline. What I'm proposing is that we launch the posting this week with a deadline of December 28th, which gives people time to get through the Christmas holiday, and still a few days after that, so that at your first meeting in January, you'd be able to see the applications, and at that point, go through the process for scheduling interviews for candidates in early or mid-January. So, this is a fast track, but to have the vacancy filled as quickly as it, as it can. What you also have is candidate information, which would be essentially what would be posted, but it lists the role of city council members, the term, the expectations, attendance at meetings, what the compensation is. Also has an application form. I'm very pleased that the city clerk's office has arranged it, so this form can be filled out online with, so there's no need for a paper application. And then this could be automatically or electronically submitted, including the six questions. The earlier draft had more questions. I thought six was a better number than the higher number, so we, we cut it down a bit. But the six questions could be responded to online as well. So, it's a fairly straightforward process that allows a citizen who meets the qualifications to apply, to meet with all of you, to see who you would appoint by mid-January. And so, if there are no questions, I would conclude my report. But I would like to get some sense from council as to whether this schedule is acceptable for the city council vacancy. So, I'm seeing thumbs up, I'm seeing a couple thumbs up, I'm seeing more thumbs up, so. I'm not seeing any thumbs down, so I guess, okay, we have one. Oh, okay. Well, no, this wasn't a, this wasn't about, Councilmember McCardle, this is just about the process, so. And so, anyway, are any comments about the process or about anything else? Mr. Woodard?
Sadly, I don't know this. Is the dollar amount per month accurate? I felt like it was, that's the number?
That's the original.
Yeah, we went up.
We're probably going to.
Okay. Well, that's a different discussion. But nonetheless.
Is it accurate? Okay. So, this, this is a draft that would be finalized, so, yeah, so the, when is, when is the, okay, so we will, yeah, this is, I wanted to get a sense of the process, and then before this goes final, hopefully Fri- Wednesday, we will have the right number. Okay.
Do you want it? We also probably need to change the address to the new City Hall address, okay?
So, the address will change, the dollar amount will change, well, it won't change, it'll, it'll reflect what is the accurate dollar amount.
It changes every year now.
Okay. So, we'll, we will make sure it's the accurate, and, but the, but the basic state law about who's qualified and how long you have to live here, and how many felony arrests that you're not allowed to have, those kinds of things are here. So, I'm seeing more thumbs up. Any other, other than the concern about Mr. McCardle not leaving? Any other concerns? Okay, well, I'll consider that a go, and that would conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the discussion to cancel the December 29th work-study session. We always cancel that, and I'm always in town for it. So, do we have to vote on this, or can we just say?
I'm being advised it's a good idea to vote to cancel. I'm not sure what you normally do, but.
We always cancel it.
A regular date, if you cancel it, I think it's probably best to vote on it.
So, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just move to cancel the December 29th meeting.
Second. Shall we vote on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we just want to say, too, that's to staff, so they have some extra time off as well.
So, the first meeting of the year, the first is on a Sunday, so Monday is the holiday. Is our city council meeting going to be on the 3rd?
Yes, on Tuesday, January 3rd.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
I'll keep this really long, so we get to 10 o'clock. No, I'm not. I, I think you all know I work with VOA, I have a lot of counterparts in the community. One of them works for Verdant's. I was having lunch with my Verdant counterpart, and he mentioned that Verdant would like to partner with Mount Lake Terrace for next year's National Night Out. They had about 300, 350 people show, so they would want to talk with whoever the correct person is. I said that would probably be our city manager. But they would want to not to send 300 people our way, they'd actually want to make sure they're supporting it in various ways. But I thought that was quite an honor, because they had a number of national night outs they could choose from, and they went with our award-winning Mount Lake Terrace National Night Out. So, kudos to us, but that's my way of passing that over to say, I'd like to connect my Verdant colleague to whoever you think is the appropriate person for National Night Out.
All right. And Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to make sure that somebody mentioned that the Mount Lake Terrace and Briar Chamber is hosting a relaunch event on the 7th, so day after tomorrow, at 6 o'clock, Briar Pizza. And so, it's an opportunity to come learn more about what they're up to. I think they're relaunching their website, and learn more about kind of what their plans are for the future. So, I think a good opportunity for folks in our community who are interested in plugging in, particularly those who are involved with local businesses, to go and see what that's all about, and really excited about the investments that we solidified tonight in, in the Mount Lake Terrace, you know, Business Association is what it's been called historically. I think for those who are, like, what is that? They, they are rebranding, but so really excited to see what that, that organization and our partnership with them means for the future of our community. So, excited about, yeah, that event. Again, it's on the 7th at 6, at Briar Pizza. Said you, RSVPs are nice, but not required. MLT News did a nice write-up if folks are looking for more information.
All right. Anyone else before I go? I wanted to thank a resident in my neighborhood who actually shoveled the walkways and sidewalks in our whole neighborhood, and my walkway all the way up to my porch, and that would be Don Sperlin, a longtime, 30-some-year resident of our city. I wanted to also give a shout-out and thank you to Phil Williams out there, and Mark Savarian for the $5 million. Oh, my goodness. That was a great, great thing to have to read today. On so, on social media, the, somebody mentioned this weekend that the light was, the, the tree didn't have any lights on, so did something trip? Is it going to, is there a time that the, that the light is on, or is the light on, the light on the tree 24 hours? Is it on now?
It was on earlier this evening when I drove home.
Okay. Well, it was like early in the evening. It's, it's right on Facebook community, someone was asking. I drove by, and there's no lights on.
It wasn't on when we came at 3 o'clock, for instance. I noted, noticed that.
Oh, okay.
It'd just be a timer thing.
Okay. And then I also, when I was driving home, and after that, I noticed that we have our old tree on top of the, on the water tower still, and so that is the one that you can see from everywhere. And I, and I noticed that the community has noticed that, too, and are real happy about our other tree being up. And then, another comment that I saw on social media, every year, somebody has a complaint about somebody, the city plowing their street, and then put the berm, or whatever you call it, they can't get into their driveway. Well, I was glad to see that some of the other people responded by saying, well, at least you got your street plowed. We didn't, we don't even have that on our street, and you can just go ahead and just remove that small section to get your car out. So, I, you know, I don't know what, every year, I see that, and I don't know what we can do, because when you plow a street, you have to move the snow somewhere. And, but I just wanted to thank our crew, because at least we do plow our streets. And I know that we live in a neighborhood where we don't get our streets plowed at all, so mine doesn't even look like, it still looks like the middle of winter wonderland.
You are still out there working on the snow. You may get to your streets.
With, well, our street apparently has never had, we've, we've never had a snowplow up our street, which is fine. I know that we get the, the cleaner on a regular basis, and I'm always happy to hear that noise coming, because that, then the streets get cleaned. And that is, that is it. So, we tried to get done by 10, but now it's 10 oh something, and we are adjourned.